Well, good evening. I'm Mary Ann Edwards, Temecula Mayor Pro Tem, and I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order, and we are going to have the invocation by City Manager Aaron Adams. So if he'll stand, and then I will do the flag salute immediately following.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Would you please bow your heads? Dearly Father Lord, we give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for the freedom to convene your work here around the city of Temecula. I pray for wisdom and discernment to guide the Temecula City Council, continue guiding the city staff. I pray, Lord, for protection for our residents, those that are battling illness and safety and health. Lord, this is a challenging time for us as Americans and Californians, and, Lord, we just pray for calmer waters ahead and safer environment battling COVID-19, Lord. And we also want to lift up our first responders, our police and fire personnel that are on the front line, Lord, that you just continue to protect them as they protect us. And we ask your blessings on this meeting this evening and give you all the glory and honor in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Aaron. So if you put your hand over your heart and repeat after me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you, gentlemen. You may be seated. So we're going to commence, and we're going to have the roll call. We are under virtual conditions here at City Hall. So, City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Pro Tem Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Nigar?
Good evening.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Juan?
I'm here.
Thank you. And do we have public comments?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem, we do have public comments on non-agendized items and no public comments on the consent calendar. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the City Council on items that appear on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. For all public hearing or business items on the agenda, each speaker is limited to five minutes. For this meeting, public comments may be submitted and read into the record pursuant to the important notice provided at the top of the agenda. Madam Mayor Pro Tem, we have about 25 or so public comments.
All right.
So I will just go ahead and start reading them into the record.
Please do.
The first comment is by Kaylee Robbins. She writes, "I am sending this email in
Yeah, we lost the city clerk.
Randy?
Yes, I apologize. So we'll go ahead and start reading the public comments. We'll read them one more, the first one again. We have about 20 or so, 2025. The first comment is Kaylee Robbins. "I am sending this email in support of the swing-in to oppose the closing of Front Street. Closing Front Street has a negative impact on the cafe and the great team that works there as a frequent patron of the swing-in. I love to see all the classic cars and motorcycles drive down the street. It's one of the reasons we come here. Again, I am opposed to the Front Street closing permanently." The next speaker is Paul Bab. "My foot traffic is back up and sales increased now that Front Street is open. Maybe we can get the trolley back to help visitors get from the parking garage to the north area of Old Town. Still a long way for seniors to walk to those restaurants and shops. Parking still an issue." Next speaker is Tony Injings Guide. "We are 14-year residents of Temecula and 38-year residents of the Valley. We were in Old Town this weekend. We really enjoyed the tables being outside where cars used to be parked. It is such a refreshing and welcoming look. It fits the theme of our town very well. It reminded us a bit of Main Street in Santa Barbara. We spoke with some of the restaurant owners. We complimented them on how nicely they have decorated and partitioned off these areas. The owners mentioned that even with all the restrictions, it is truly helping their businesses stay open. Many customers have mentioned how they would like to keep this look. We would like to cast our vote for these changes to be permanent." The next speaker is Adam Enintov. He's the Public Affairs Manager from SoCal Gas. SoCal Gas would like to take a minute to remind folks to please call 811 before you dig. It could save a life. Also, if you know someone who is having trouble paying their gas bill, they might qualify for a discount. To learn more, please visit www.socalgas/assistants or call 81800-427-2200. Stay well and be safe. The next speaker is David Lewis. "A positive outcome for all. Retail sales are on the upswing here at Tao's Territorial Traders. Retail sales are going through the roof since the opening of Old Town Front Street on July 17, 2020. Other merchants have said their business sales have increased drastically. Thanks to the city's quick action, it has been a win-win for all businesses and restaurants. Let's keep the streets and sidewalks open and moving ahead into the new year beyond. Hoping that COVID-19 will eventually be conquered. God bless all merchants, Temecula residents, our customer base, and the city council." The next speaker is Diane Rownton. "Please be aware, the opening of the street immediately brought back the patrons. It has relieved the chaos and confusion caused by the closure, and every day is more prosperous than the day before. People love the parking options and the ambiance has been restored. It's in the best interest for everyone to keep the street open." The next speaker is Sean Smoot. "Thank you for taking the time to hear from the merchants that were being hurt financially while the roads were closed earlier this month. Also, thank you to Matt and Mary Ann for their efforts in making a transition to a more reasonable way of handling the new outdoor seating for some of the restaurants in Old Town. One that is more fair and helps more small businesses than it hurts. There was a significant customer decline at the time the barriers were up. My customers that did make an effort to come to the shop voiced their opinions about feeling very uncomfortable and inconvenienced, and some were even confused about what was going on while walking around in general with the big blocks and big sign in the middle of the street obstructing the center of our beautiful small-town feel. Nearly immediately, the first weekend that the street opened up again, everyone noticed an increase in revenue, an increase in happy customer foot traffic, and an overall better synergy all over Old Town. The flow is back, and it's better." The next speaker is Lorena Spencer. "Keep the traffic flowing and the sidewalks open. It has definitely helped our businesses. Mr. Nigar, you showed your true colors at the last council meeting by going to the mat defending and supporting one property owner. You insisted they be grandfathered in before closing the meeting. In doing so, we have witnessed entire families with small children walking single file in traffic trying to reach the corner of Front and Main Street. Please open the sidewalk before someone is injured. Councilmember Zach, you said that some of us are open by appointments only. You're right. I love what I do for a living and would like to continue doing so. I'm also in my 60s, so for that reason, I have decided, after speaking to my doctor, that the safest way to protect myself and my customers would be to slow the traffic down in the garden. I have many customers that have health issues and appreciate what I'm doing, and I'm willing to take a financial hit in order to keep us all safe. So during this pandemic, the Painted Garden will continue to be open by appointments only. Thank you. We need more public restrooms." The next speaker is Sean Sargent. This one is a little bit long, so I'll start the three-minute timer. "Councilwoman Edwards and Councilman Ron, the majority of the Old Town business owners appreciate your conscientious deliberations that led to the 4-0 vote to reopen Old Town Front Street. Old Town foot traffic has increased since reopening the street. This past weekend, I had a customer tell me they saw our store when they drove by and decided to stop and shop. Opening the street has increased our foot traffic and revenue. Thank you both for being the voice of reason. Councilmember Schwenk, you voted twice to keep Old Town Front Street closed. For the majority of the July 14 City Council meeting, you sided with Councilman Nigar in keeping Old Town Front Street closed. Neither of you presented empirical rational evidence to support keeping the street closed. Instead, you agreed with everything Councilman Nigar said. You sided with a politician who, at the meeting's onset, immediately discounted the voice of many Old Town businesses who sent in their comment a few days prior to the meeting, a politician who favors the few over the many. Both you and Councilman Nigar provided no logical sound reasoning to keep the street closed. Then, as you did in previous votes on this subject, you sided with the majority rather than be the lone no vote. When you met with me, my wife, and a few other Old Town business owners, you said, 'I don't want to leave here with you hating me.' You did not favor the street closure, nor did you want to see Old Town turn into a gas-lamp district. We all asked that you recommend a special meeting of the City Council take place prior to the July 14 regularly scheduled meeting. Rather than stay, of course, you outlined with us, you sided with Councilman Nigar to keep the street closed. Did you recommend to the City Council a special session take place to address the closure? The closing of a public sidewalk next to 1909 shows they have more influence in Old Town than any other business. Also, it looks like the city put up a sign to divert visitors to the other side of the street. That appears to be favoritism. I'd like you to go on the record at this meeting stating why they were allowed to close the sidewalk. There had to be some deliberation between you, Councilman Nigar, and the city manager's office to allow this to happen. Tell us all why and who approved the public sidewalk closure. In fairness, all of Old Town businesses should have an equal vote and stand on level ground with the higher receipt businesses in Old Town. Your process lacks transparency. Speaking of transparency, as of July 27, 2020, the video of the Old Town Steering Committee meeting held on May 29 is still not available on the Temecula TV website. The video was sent to me by the City Clerk's office, but still has not been uploaded. Will you go on record and state why the Old Town Steering Committee meeting video has not been posted? This is not a conspiracy theory. You and Councilman Nigar's actions, behavior, since this test experimental course of action was considered at the May 29, 2020, Old Town Steering Committee gives a perception of favoritism. I hope the voters see you for what you are disingenuous." The next speaker is Rene Emke. "First, the gambling cowboy and Rene's cowgirl Cantina would like to thank Councilman Matt Ron and Mayor Pro Tem Mary Ann Edwards for their support in the reopening of Front Street. In a matter of days, we could see the improvement in foot traffic and increased business. We would like to see it remain open. It appears the businesses that had Councilman Nigar concerned are doing just fine. Old Town Temecula, with all the governor's restrictions, appears to be getting some life back into it, and all the businesses, not just the restaurants, seem to be picking up. Of course, we all have a long way to go, but the opening of the street has helped immensely. Thank you." The next speaker is Lilia Ossavescaya. "It is more a thank-you email to City Council than a request. I do know from City Council meeting information posted from last meeting that there was a real challenge for all members to accommodate opposite requests from merchants, and I want to thank you for keeping our Old Town open for car and foot traffic. In these challenging times, we need the city to be behind our backs and support business. Fact, operational proceeds are up 35% and almost 80% in comparison to previous years. I am not counting last summer, as the change of sidewalks and construction next door affected traffic dramatically in 2019. Any destructions and change of scenery does very painfully for us merchants. Please keep it open. In addition, tourists are not going to be back for a while, and local tourism is extremely important. Anything city can do to attract local traffic, please reach out and involve us. We are more than interested to help." Next speaker is T. Frank. "I have a business on Sixth Street, and I also live in Old Town Temecula. Since the compromise of opening the street for traffic and allowing merchants to move into parking spaces, I have seen more foot traffic and activity along the streets. I have spoken to merchants who have seen an increase in business as well. When the thoroughfare was closed, it appeared to be a construction zone and deterred people from the area. Some even commented it was like a war zone. Do not enter. I do not understand the reason to have the street completely blocked off unless it would be for one big street party with no social distancing. We are in a health crisis globally. Whatever can be done to help foster all businesses is important. Keep this compromise. Please do not close the street again." The next speaker is Ted Carley. "In regards to opening and closing Old Town Front Street at the whims of selected individuals is wrong. What is good for the city is an open spacious sidewalk area that gets you all the way through Old Town without having to compete with cars and cocktail tables. Food establishments along Front Street, as a majority, do not agree with the closer and sidewalk closer, which should be illegal, especially for the handicap. Please keep Front Street and sidewalks open to automobile and foot traffic." The next speaker is Francois Javier Medin. "I'm the owner of the shop, Osevant de Provence, at 28657 Old Town Front Street. I heard City Hall wants to close Old Town Front Street again, and I'm against that. Since the street has reopened, our business restarted, and for our neighbors, it's the same. We will take an employee because of this restart. If Old Town Front Street closes again, we won't create this job for sure. The other point is for my deliveries of soap. Our storage is outside the shop, and when we bring some, it's 300 or 400 pounds of soap. If we have to park far away, how can we do?" So we hope you will hear us all. Have a great day. The next speaker is Nicole DeShays. "I would like to express my concern with the rat issue in our community. I had originally lived in Starlight Ridge and saw the issue there, and now have moved to the other side of Temecula and Vale Ranch community and see the same issue but worse. I have now captured over 20 in a short time span. I am concerned for the safety of my children and dog. I am not the only one in our community that has seen an influx in rodent activity. We have them in our backyard every night and have found a couple in our pool. Our neighbor is having the same issue. I would like to know how Temecula City is addressing this growing issue. I would suggest putting more stations in these areas and having them service more frequently, such as Vale Park, that has tons of bushes where these rodents live in." The next speaker is Christopher Pack. "I'd like to submit the following comment issued to the City Council. Temecula is suffering from a rodent problem. I am a current resident of Paloma del Sol, and have personally trapped over 40 rats in less than 12 months, and that's just casually setting traps when I remember to. I see a few bait stations throughout the city on public roads, but most look like they are not monitored and/or serviced very frequently. I know that this is not just an issue with my home, street, or even community. I know numerous Temecula residents in other communities that have the same issue. In my opinion, the city should take more charge on this issue. First, maybe we can increase the amount of bait stations throughout the city and make sure the contracted pest control company is monitoring these frequently to replace the poison blocks. They should also be placed in targeted areas that currently have heavy activity. This leads me to my next suggestion, which would be to speak to the community about this issue. We should be getting feedback from residents and our pest control companies to locate the areas with higher infestation problems to better target them. The community should also be educated about the issue. I can't even tell you how many people I've spoken to that don't even know they have rats running along their fence and in their yard. There are simple things people can do, such as not leaving pet food or water outside or keeping their barbecues cleaned. Residents should be aware, and maybe that will help adjust the things they do to eliminate food and water sources. I know that with COVID, there are a lot of other things to worry about right now, but rodents, especially rats, carry a ton of disease, and I don't think it's a battle we want to let up on. I think if the city and residents team up, we can drastically reduce the rodent population in the area and make the city even cleaner and safer than it already is. Thank you for your time." The next speaker is Emily Carrion. "Hello, my name is Emily Carrion, and I am a resident of Temecula. I am once again calling on our City Council members to propose and implement a robust plan for protecting Temecula residents from police violence. I watched the July 14 City Council meeting and carefully listened to the comments of fellow Temecula residents about the report on race and equity efforts. Like my neighbors, I believe that the action items listed in the report are insufficient measures for reducing racial inequity in policing specifically and in our city more broadly. The solutions in the report are nearly all geared towards educating individuals about racism. While important, those solutions will not change the city's budget allocation, which prioritizes business interests over the health and safety of Black, Brown, and Poor residents. City Council members referenced the Quality of Life Master Plan several times during the discussion. The word "safety" is mentioned 76 times in the Quality of Life Master Plan, and a safe and prepared community is one of our city's supposed core values. Yet, research consistently shows that police make Black people feel less safe and that arrest rates have little effect on crime rates. So why does the City Council continue to work under the assumption that spending nearly half of our city's budget on policing and placing police in schools is the best way to keep Temecula residents safe? I would like to remind the City Council members that another of Temecula's core values is an accountable and responsive city government. As of now, the City Council is not holding itself accountable to its residents of color. The City Council's failure to enact real change is eroding trust between the community and its government. This was clear from the number of public comments two weeks ago, expressing lack of faith in City Council members' ability to appoint fair and effective representatives to the Diversity Board and expressing disappointment that community groups were not consulted about the report. Moreover, our City Council members did nothing to address the various concerns raised during the public comments. Personally, I have written several emails to our City Council members recently and have received no response. This leads me to conclude that the City Council members are uninterested in the concerns and input of Temecula residents, but would rather pay lip service to equity in order to make this problem go away. I hope the City Council members prove me wrong. I demand our City Council members stop paying lip service to racial equity and instead take decisive action to address the racism built in the Temecula's budget priorities." The next speaker is Brenda Juckett Schultz. "I own Thomas Edwards Salon and Dry Bar on Fifth Street. First, I'd like to thank Matt and Mary Ann for truly listening to the concerns of the local merchants regarding the street closures. This had a very big negative effect on my business and many others. I felt relieved for holding your positions against Mike Nigar and Zach, who was with all intent on voting against the merchants and keeping the street closures. I could not believe the fight Mike had for just a few businesses. I am appalled how easily Mike dismissed our concerns and called them only opinions. Dismissed any emails prior to the meeting, allowing other businesses to put their business in front of another establishment was insane, and the sarcastic remarks to small salons. By the way, according to last year's revenue and today's numbers during street closure, has devastated our numbers during closure, a 45% loss during the street closure. These are facts, not opinions. I have to say that I have never in my entire life was so grateful for Mary Ann Edwards and Matt for taking the position of being fair, listening to both sides with compassion, and opening the street for the merchants. She restored faith that not all politicians have hidden agendas. Opening the street has dramatically helped many of my fellow merchants' business. At the moment, patrons are just buying product from us, which has helped us greatly with all the foot traffic. The businesses around me seem almost back to a normal rate during the day and brought life back into our sweet old town. Hopefully, the city begins to work on more parking very soon, since restaurants are getting many parking spaces. Just a suggestion, perhaps add more box trees as part of the city planning for more shade along the street for the merchants and patrons." I hope this will be the last letter I have to write to the city to do what is in the best interest of many merchants, and remember, there are more other businesses in Old Town than just an eatery. Let's continue the diversity within the businesses. The next speaker is Mike and Nicole Kelleher. "We would like to thank Matt and Mary Ann for staying strong in opening Front Street. We have had a lot more foot traffic now that the streets are open. This allows every vendor in Old Town to advertise their spot to those passing by who may not know a store existed. Weather, yes. It has been hot, humid, windy, and the virus is still here. People are walking our town and driving through it because the street is open. Our traffic, tourism, regular customers, and shopping has gone up. What the city has provided for barriers to protect the restaurants participating stores looks nice. It is a better visual and great to have the same look through the town. However, we still need more signage to guide the traffic towards the open parking. The city does such a great job with holiday decorations and switching out the flag banners. We just need to add some banners or eye-catching additional parking signs. The street usage should only be allowed if the store/restaurant actually uses a spot for merchandise or dining, not for advertising. A-frame barrier trees, wine barrels, and so on. We need the parking spots that are not being used for the purpose of outside shopping for the tourists, customers, and employees to park. Is it possible to open a dirt lot on the north side of Old Town to assist that area? For deliveries, we notice our shipments cost more with the street closure. We were told we then were considered limited access. Thank you again for opening up the streets as our cost has gone back to normal." Not all stores are open. Responding to the comments made from council members on 7/14, "Not all stores are open every day, nor have they ever been. Lots of stores/restaurants have previously been closed on Monday, Tuesday. Our store previously has always been open seven days a week. This is a weird time, and more business has more restricted hours or open less days. Some offer appointments on the slower days like us. This should not be held against us. This is assisting us to keep our doors open. Customers just come to eat." No, they do not. There are plenty of great restaurants around Old Town. They come for the Old Town shopping experience and history. Buses don't drop off tourists for the food. They come for the experience of Old Town. Thank you for listening. The next speaker is Jerry Myers. "I want to thank Matt for acknowledging all of the merchants' concerns with the street being closed and the negative effect the street closure had on our business, and for holding his position against Mike Nigar, who was intent on voting against the merchants and keeping the street closed. Thank you to Mary Ann for taking the position on being fair, listening to both sides, and opening the street for the merchants. 28 merchants wrote in to open the street, and only four wrote in to keep it closed. Old Town is the largest concentration of small business owners in Temecula. Opening the street has dramatically helped our business. We are almost back to a normal rate, and it seems the restaurants are busier during the day. Now the streets are open. This proved closing the street was a bad idea. Here from the temecula.gov website is the traffic count per the city: 17,000 cars a day. How could you not consider our business being affected by that loss of traffic and then ignore our emails when the city has all that data readily available to make these decisions? Did nobody pull those numbers?" It was very disconcerting that Mike and Zach voted against the merchants to keep the street closed, had both admitted that they haven't really been in Old Town in years. Mike said people come to Old Town primarily to eat. For the record, there are 38 restaurants in Old Town and 200 businesses total. Mike and Zach are two members of the Old Town Steering Committee. When is the next Old Town Steering Committee meeting? At the last meeting, Mike suggested giving utilized street space in front of stores to anyone willing to use it. We pay a premium to be located on Front Street and for our visibility. Would Mike allow another real estate company to set up in the parking lot of his real estate office in Paris? I think not. As far as parklets that were discussed, they will cause loitering. In 2015, there was an issue with the picnic table by the Soros, where the homeless were doing drugs and having sex in public, and nobody knew who owned the picnic table or who was responsible for it. That article is below for reference. There's a link to it. "Since restaurants are getting box trees as part of the Dining Outdoors Initiative, some bars are not even practicing social distancing. The parklets funds should be reallocated to purchase trees, shade landscaping along the street for merchants." "The city of Temecula recently removed a picnic bench near the Sixth Street bus stop in Old Town at the request of city merchants, who said it had been used for illicit activities by members of the area's transient population. The merchant initially asked the owner of the stage shop building at the corner of Sixth and Old Town Front Streets to move it, but the owner told his colleagues it was actually on city property." The next speaker is Sheena Hurtig. "I wanted to shoot over an email and tell you how wonderful I think the change is to Old Town Temecula. I'm not sure if this is permanent, but I truly hope it is. The change gives Old Town a very welcoming, walk-around-and-explore kind of feel. Thank you for adapting to this change and for looking for ways to keep our amazing businesses up and running safely." The next speaker is Julie Kramer. "Opening Front Street back up in Old Town Temecula has given my sales a boost. The street closure was very disappointing, as it made my sales cliff dive when compared to the weeks prior to the roadblocks. If the roads become blocked again, I would expect my sales to drop 80% to 90% again. Please do not nail the coffin in for the non-restaurant establishments by putting the roadblocks back up. The sudden road closure in Old Town Temecula was primarily been billed as an effort to help the restaurants expand their footprint. The other merchants have been treated as a pesky afterthought that need to be smoked out. This whole thing reeks of veiled redevelopment. It is not fair to use city resources to uplift some businesses on the backs of others. This whole closure was primarily benefiting two restaurants. Why should everyone else have to go under just for them to have a few more mostly unoccupied tables in the streets? Parking was a huge issue during the closure. There initially were suggestions to park in an incomplete structure, and other lots were not convenient for some shops. Street parking is still greatly diminished for the merchants who depend on convenient spaces to turn over. Several shops were very hard to access for disabled clients. Cars were parking on the sidewalk in front of the Olive Company, blocking foot traffic down Main Street. The back public access way to the historical jail and Emporium Shops was completely barricaded. Imagine being barricaded into your own place of business and not being able to receive foot traffic nor walk to the street along your most convenient route to get lunch. The Emporium Shops were negatively impacted on all sides because of the closure. Delivery drivers were parking in the intersection to drop off goods, which backed up the street and created pedestrian hazards in the open intersections. The flow of business in general was utterly disrupted by the blockage." "This outdoor dining hurt everyone except a few restaurant owners who, in some cases, own several restaurants in Old Town. Be Good in 1909 are the worst for business and safety in the area. I thought it was agreed that they would open up the sidewalks for pedestrians. The sidewalk at 1909 should be opened up, as it is whether establishments are participating in the street use. Why would 1909 have a special sidewalk privilege? In 1909, I see people walking in the street with no margin at all to get around the large footprint on the sidewalk and the street parking that 1909 has taken up. The waitstaff at Be Good will have to cut through pedestrian traffic to serve street-side since their sidewalk is open. I fear the accidents that will occur from such greed, negligence, and idiocracy. I would hate to be a merchant in the building next door to 1909 who really would not be able to receive any foot traffic. The sidewalk is not open for public ingress and egress. You have to privatize the city sidewalk. You have privatized the city sidewalk. You are creating different sets of rules and classes for merchants. Ironically, those restaurants Be Good in 1909 already had extensive outdoor dining, making this all the more insulting to other shops that have sacrificed their padded benefit. How much should other businesses lose per extra table in the street? This is business. Let's crunch numbers at what costs. Safety remains a concern in other ways as well. The blocking off of the fire hydrant in the front of the Olive Company is worrisome. There isn't even a blue reflector in the street to help indicate where worrisome. There isn't even a blue reflector in the street to help indicate where it is. It seems very inaccessible. Many of the buildings are old historical wood structures. Safety is being compromised right and left just so that a few owners can maximize their bottom line within their restaurants. The bars and barriers around the tables in the street are ludicrously, are ludicrously inadequate, considering they are inches from moving cars. The constant changes in the width of the road make it confusing to navigate for drivers looking to shop and park. Safety should not be disregarded like this. Please disclose, are there outside influences such as redevelopment or chain stores courting, the courting the city council? We are seeing many cities close streets in favor of outdoor dining, and it is proving to be a small business killer. I ask members of the Temecula City Council, the Chamber of Commerce, the Board of Supervisors, and any other city staff with a potential conflict of interest if they have any financial interest in the restaurants or potential redevelopment. Please disclose ethical issues and recuse yourselves in the matter. Some of you are bending over backwards for these restaurants, and it is very suspect when looking at the facts. You will not be, you will not be rewarded for ruining other merchants, creating safety hazards and junking up the city streets with tacky swap meet style tents and furnitures. The character and feel of Old Town is utterly ruined now. From the beginning, it has been clear that other shops and businesses were merely an afterthought in the favoring of the restaurants. The additional banner placed on the uninviting orange barrier addressing shops seems like a betting hedge liability limiting measure. It isn't good enough. The small businesses only care about their bottom line and none of these optics. Old Town had a good weekend for sales just prior to the roadblocks being put up, which provides more proof that the sudden cliff dive in sales and traffic can be attributed to the street closure. City Council has already conceded that the road closure was a failing prospect. Why else one would block, why else was one block left open? That's in excess of three minutes. The next speaker is Dolores Sargent. Good evening. To start, I would like to thank Councilwoman Edwards and Councilmember Ron for their genuine concern for the majority of Old Town business owners during the July fourteenth City Council meeting. If not for your thoughtful approach in addressing the fairness of the Old Town Front Street closure, many of us would continue to struggle. Hereafter, most of my public comments address the statements, actions, and behaviors of Councilmember Nagar and Schwenk during the July fourteenth City Council meeting. After hearing the agenda item public comment, Councilwoman Edwards stated that she did not want a swap meet-like atmosphere, and Councilmember Ron commented that we, City Council, have to mitigate the negative effect a street closure would have on the businesses along Old Town Front Street. Council, Councilwoman Edwards and Councilman Ron's queries were on the mark when it came to considering the concerns of the majority of Old Town business owners. Luke stated that Major Lee has spoken, has stated the majority has spoken, and we want our streets open and businesses utilizing their own parking before moving on to the streets and taking up parking space. Their concern was not reciprocated by Councilmember Schwenk and Nagar. On June thirtieth, in response to a prior email sent to Councilmember Schwenk, I received an email from him requesting to meet. We met the following Friday at my store to discuss the street closure. Myself, my husband, and two other business owners met with the council member for approximately one hour. During this time, we addressed its negative impact and the local and the lack of notice provided to effective business owners. Councilman Schwenk agreed with our concerns and stated he did not want Old Town Front Street to emulate San Diego Gas Amp District. Yet during the July fourteenth City Council meeting, he cited other cities' successes in replicating a gas amp district-type atmosphere as a reason to keep Old Town street closed. This was a hundred and eighty-degree flip-flop from what he had said. Additionally, during our meeting, he mentioned an experience he and his family had while walking in front of Churchston Brewery. Customers at the brewery directed cat calls as he and his wife passed by the bar. In my opinion, no one should be subjected to that kind of treatment. Ethan. Thank you. He finished up the meeting by stating to us, I'm the only one person you need to send your concerns and writing to so I can do something. However, when we submitted our public comment opposing the closure, he went against everything he said he would do when he met with us. Luke stated the emergency access was a concern for police and fire departments. If safety is paramount, how is it that the fire hydrant at the corner of Main and Old Town Front Street is completely blocked off? Both the Olive Oil Store and Hass of Jerky have set up shop in those parking spaces. The protective barrier setup in that area blocks access to the fire hydrant. Furthermore, both of those setups have not been consistently used by either business, yet access to the fire hydrant has been blocked and inhibited. Doesn't this put many businesses at risk? Also, shouldn't businesses who submitted applications to set up in public parking spots be required to sell their product during regular business hours? Many times I have seen both areas void of any sales staff and product. Luke, you stated that there were sufficient participation, the program would work. Based on mine and other Old Town business owners' observation, there is not sufficient participation. Only two businesses on our block are utilizing this program, and two of eight businesses north of us are utilizing this program. I do not want, I do not count the pub and grab or swing in as they are being responsible and using their own property. Businesses with patios would not be shut down under the governor's orders. They have patios and private parking that should be enough until they can fully reopen. How is it that Bailey's can set up in public parking spots while not using any of their patio? That's three minutes. And the last comment is Suzanne Lane. Just, hi, just needed to encourage you all to please stand up for the people's constitutional rights. Please do not allow government funds to drive your decisions. Thank you. And Madam Mayor Pretend, that concludes the public comments.
Thank you. All right, then, we are ready to move on to council report. So, any council reports? I see Mike, Mike, want to go ahead? Unmute. There you go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening to you. And first, thank you all you Old Town merchants for letting your voice be heard. I'm glad it's working out. I'm glad the council made the right decision, and I'm glad that we had the robust debate. I think it was for an hour, hour and a half, and that's just what the council should do. And I'm glad it's working out. Keep us posted. A couple of, actually, one other thing. For some time now, and I'll tell you when to move the slides, I've been wanting to consider renaming Palo Park. You know, we just haven't gotten around to it. I remember talking to Councilmember Ron earlier this year, and then, of course, all the events of this year broke loose, COVID, and, and the protests across the nations. And I want to send this over to the Community Services Commission for consideration. But I also want to kind of outline what I have in mind. And of course, this will obviously get public input and certainly get input from the commission, then, of course, come back to the City Council for discussion. So, these are just my initial ideas, but I'm hoping that we, you know, like cotton candy, gather momentum along the way. A couple of my reasons is, just like when we changed Palo Road to Pachanga Parkway, there just really is no connection in Temecula to Palo. Out of legitimate concern, and Councilmember Ron, I appreciate you bringing that up, as the liaison to the Pachanga Tribe, I went and checked with them to see if there was any connection or concern, and they had none. So, up on the screen, you see our special needs park. That's over at Margarita Park. That's what we call Eagle Sword Playground. And I remember when we opened it up, we had about, I don't know, hundred kids there or more, maybe, what, hundred fifty, maybe almost two hundred kids. And Mayor Pretend Edwards told me something at the time. She said, Mike, everybody was just enamored how wonderful this was. And she said, Mike, can you tell the special needs kids from the typical kids? I said, no, I can't. And her remark was, that's the point. And what we did was accomplish full inclusion. And as the kids play, they play together, and they don't draw those distinctions. Kind of segue to why this is important, what I see over at Palo Park. If we can go to the next slide. And the one after that, that's just the Eagle Sword, one after that. There's a new development. You see on the left is Pachanga Parkway in the fourth street. There over toward the right front is Loma Linda. And geez, I forget the name of the street where Palo Park is off of, but you can see Palo Park off in the distance, right there next to the Temecula Creek. And when we approved this development, it was a zone change. And in accordance with our growth management plan, to get the zone changed, the developer had to provide some sort of city benefit. The subcommittee negotiated and later the City Council approved to revamp that part to include a special needs playground and, and new bathrooms and pretty much bring it up to current standards. And if you can roll through the next slides real, real quick. And you just see some of the things there. Keep rolling through them. Those are just concepts that are coming. I understand from staff, we're looking at something like this to be completed in February of next year, maybe late this year, but probably February next year. And those are just renderings of, of what's coming or examples. Now, why, why do I want to do this? I kind of have an idea, and this is what I'd like the council to eventually consider, but to go over to the Community Services Commission, I want to rename this part Friendship Park. I want this part to be called Friendship Park. And if you can go to my last slide. This is by no means a depiction, but what I want to see when people go to Friendship Park, which is an example of inclusion, and when we talk about inclusion, we mean children of every race, children of every ability and disability, I'd like to see depicted there. And it's very interesting because in this, in this nationwide dialogue we're having regarding races, and of course, I like to also include inclusion, I like the word inclusion, and especially when it applies to disabilities, is when you get children playing together, just like the first slide that I showed you, typically, they don't draw distinctions between black, white, color, ability, wheelchair. They just want to play. And if you leave them alone, they will find ways to play. They'll play in the sand, they'll play on the playground, they'll play ball, they'll throw a ball, they'll make up a game. And we all know that. Children are that way. And that's why I want to depict this as Friendship Park. I don't have every idea, you know, in stone for this, but perhaps maybe when, when any child goes to play there, they see themselves. They see themselves if they're in a wheelchair. They see themselves if they have Down Syndrome. They see themselves if they're black, white, Asian, Filipino, Indian, you name it. And boy, would I just love, you know, just, just every child to be depicted there. So, I don't have every answer here, and I want to send this through our system so that, so that it leans ideas along the way and then get it back to the City Council so we can examine it all. But that's my hope, Friendship Park. And I think that would be a nice legacy to exactly what we rolled out at our last City Council meeting. So, sorry for the long report, Madam Mayor Pretend. It was necessary, but I think we can do something real good here.
So, Mike, are we seeking consensus to send it to Community Services?
Well, that's up to staff. I think I can just ask Community Services to consider it. But what I didn't want to do is, is blindside the, the council and say, hey, what's going on? So, that's why I, I wanted to let everybody know what I was thinking and why I'm sending it over there for consideration. Let me make it clear. I do want their input, and absolutely, the council has final say on all of this. We all have ideas. This is the launching point. So, you know, I have no exclusion on this. But I think we all know what I'd like to accomplish, what we all want to accomplish. We've been talking about it, and I think it could be a great thing, particularly with all of our input.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Nobody else? That's it? All right, then. So, we have two council comments. We're on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the City Council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. So... We have item number one, waiving, reading of standard ordinance and resolutions. Number two, approve action minutes. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, adopt resolution to establish amount of voter-approved Measure C annual special tax levy for fiscal year 202021. Number five, adopt resolution approving and agreement for the sale and purchase of real property and joint escrow instructions between Riverside County Flood Control and Water Conservation District and the city of Temecula and related documents. No, that's the end. Okay. So, anybody want to pull anything? No? Then I still need a, I need a motion and second for consent calendar.
Over approval.
Unmute.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and second. And Madam City Clerk, you want to do a roll call vote?
Yes. Mayor Pretend Edwards.
Aye.
Councilmember Nagar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ron.
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk.
All right, thank you. It's unanimous. And I will now recess the council meeting to the meeting of the Temecula Community Services District and turn the meeting over to Councilmember Schwenk as president of TCSD.
Thank you, Mayor Pretend Edwards. I'll call tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. All right, since we remain in that virtual setting, Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Director Edwards.
Director Nagar.
Director Ron.
Here.
President Schwenk.
I'm here. Thank you very much. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not.
Thank you. We'll dispense with the reading of the rules. We'll move on to our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. We have one item tonight is item number six, approve action minutes of July fourteenth, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
I'm sorry, I have Ms. Edwards, who is the, who is the first?
That was me.
I'll take second.
Oh, you can have the first if you want.
Oh, no, you.
I will go ahead and note it. Mayor Pretend Edwards.
Aye.
Councilmember Nagar.
Here and yea.
Councilmember Ron. And Councilmember Schwenk.
Aye. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. That passes. Tonight, we have one public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the Board of Directors before or during a public hearing in support of or in opposition to the approval of the project in the manner prescribed in the important notice at the top of this agenda. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised in written correspondence delivered to the Board Secretary at or prior to the public hearing. So, our public hearing tonight is to approve the Temecula Community Services District proposed rates and charges for fiscal year 202021. We have a staff report, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. President and Board of Directors. The Temecula Community Services District, which operates under the authority of the Community Services District law, provides a variety of services to city residents, including residential street lighting, perimeter landscaping, slope maintenance, recycling, refuse collection, and unpaved road maintenance within the city of Temecula. These services are collectively referred to as TCSD's service levels. Property owners only pay for the TCSD services used or made available to their property through separate charges on their property tax bills. Each of the service levels have separate rates and charges that are detailed in the engineer's annual levy report prepared by the city's consulting firm, Web Municipal Finance, who are also available on tonight's Zoom call for any technical questions. At tonight's public hearing, staff is requesting that the board adopt the rates and charges established for each service level for fiscal year 202021. Rates for Service Level B, or Residential Street Lighting, and Service Level R, Unpaved Road Maintenance, are proposed to remain unchanged from the current rate of twenty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents for street lighting and one hundred and fifteen dollars, twenty-six cents for unpaved road maintenance per single-family residence per year. There are a total of twenty-nine zones within Service Levels C, which is the perimeter landscaping and slope maintenance. Two of the zones have an annual inflator that were previously approved through property owner elections, and the fiscal year 2021 rate reflects a 2.9 Consumer Price Index increase. Rates within the remaining twenty-seven zones will remain unchanged from the prior year. Rates for Service Level D, which is the residential recycling and refuse services, are calculated annually per the franchise agreement with CRNR. For fiscal year 2021, the rate is proposed to increase seven dollars and seventeen cents to a rate of three hundred and three dollars, three hundred and three dollars and nineteen cents per household per year. The rate increase is a result of the Consumer Price Index and land tipping fee increases per the franchise agreement. This concludes my report, and we are available for any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Director Hennessy. Do any of our colleagues have any questions for staff?
I do not, but I see that Alex Brickovich is, you know, attending the Zoom meeting if, if anybody has any questions for him.
Okay, all right. Okay, now we will go ahead and open the public hearing. We'll move on to public comments. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you. Any general comments or questions of staff? All right, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Motion and second?
Okay, and Director Edwards.
Aye.
Director Nagar.
Aye.
Director Ron.
Aye.
And President Schwenk.
I'm an aye. Thank you very much. All right, that passes. All right, we'll move on to our director's report, Director Hawkins, anything this evening?
Nothing for me tonight, Mr. President, but Commission Chair Levine has an exciting report coming up later, so that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, sir. General Matters Report, anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President, sorry.
Thank you very much, sir. Any Board of Directors' reports tonight? All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting to our August 11th meeting and turn it back over to Mayor Potem Edwards.
Thank you, Zach, and I will reconvene the Temecula, the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, actually, I'm opening this meeting, so, um, we're going to take the roll?
Yes, Director Schwenk?
I'm here.
Director Ron?
I'm here.
Director Nigar?
I am here.
And Vice Chair Edwards?
Here. All right, and do we have any SARDA public comments?
We do not.
We do not, so we'll move on to the next thing. We have the SARDA Consent Calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussions of these items unless members of the successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. All right, so item number eight, approve action minutes of July 14th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, so Randy, you want to call the roll for the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Director Edwards?
Aye.
Director Nigar?
Aye.
Director Ron?
Aye.
Director Schwenk?
Aye.
All right, thank you, so do we have any reports? Mr. Executive Director, anything?
Nothing further tonight.
I was going to say, there seems to be about a 10-second lag between the dais here and upstairs, so I don't, I'm totally not getting that, but okay.
I'll try to start talking earlier and anticipate.
Yeah, exactly. Board of Directors, anything?
No.
No? 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 All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn SARDA.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And roll call, Edwards, aye, Nigar?
Aye.
And Matt?
Aye.
And Zach?
Aye.
And that is unanimous, and so SARDA will be adjourned. Okay, now we're going to move back to the Temecula Public Financing Authority, so we want to have that roll call. I, I think everybody's still here, but just for the record.
Yes, Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Nigar?
Here.
Director Ron?
Yes, here.
Director Schwenk?
Here.
Thank you. So, um, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Authority, we do not. So again, moving on to the consent calendar, all matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote, though will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Public Financing Authority request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. So first item is number nine, authorize fiscal year 2020-21 special tax levies for the community facilities districts.
Right?
Okay? And...
You can get a motion?
Yeah, let's go ahead and get a motion on this one. And a second, all in favor, aye, and you want to do a roll call?
Yes. So Director Edwards?
Aye.
Director Nigar?
Here and aye.
Director?
Aye. All right.
Okay, so moving on to reports, Mr. Executive Director?
I don't get a vote?
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
Aye.
So all in favor, aye.
So noted.
Okay. So that's unanimous, now we can move on to executive director reports, anything?
Nothing.
Okay, directors, anything?
No.
No, then I will take a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And let the records reflect that that is unanimous, and we will now reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. This will be a public hearing, um, we have two of them tonight, so any person may submit written comments to the city council before or during public hearing in support of or in opposition to the approval of projects in the manner prescribed in the important notice that at the top of this agenda. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. And the first item is number 10, adopt weed abatement lien resolution for fiscal year 2018-19 and 2019-20. So do we have a staff report?
Yes, good evening, members of the council, we go ahead and share my screen. So before you tonight is the, uh, the 2018-19 and 1920 weed abatement liens. Uh, this is an annual process, um, and each spring, the city begins abatement of hazardous vegetation throughout the city. Um, and the city has entered into an agreement, uh, this year with Inland Empire Property Services to go ahead and provide that service. As far as the abatement notification is concerned, parcel owners are notified via certified mail of the need to abate weeds, and they are given the opportunity to abate those weeds on their own before the city takes any action. If the no action is taken, the city will acquire a warrant and actually enter the property and abate the weeds for life safety reasons. Owners, if the, if the city actually has to go ahead and do the abatement, uh, owners are billed for that abatement service, uh, plus a administrative fee of $140. The city then places a lien on the property of, uh, of the, of the property owners, uh, if, if that, uh, fee is not paid. But prior to the lien going on the property, that's what we're doing here tonight, it requires a public hearing. Property owners, the, the, the purpose of this hearing is to give property owners and public the opportunity to comment on the proposed liens. Um, if the council adopts a resolution, there will be, uh, a resolution confirming the actual payment costs incurred by the city, will submit that to the Riverside County Treasurer, and as of today, uh, as of right now, there are 49 properties throughout the city that have liens proposed tonight. So with that, uh, staff is recommending that the council adopt a resolution of the city council, the city Temecula ordering confirmation of the special assessments against parcels of land within the City of Temecula for cost of abatement and removal of hazardous vegetation for fiscal years 2018-19 and 1920.
All right, thank you, Luke, are there any questions? I'm addressing all of the council members now, any questions? I see none, so we will go ahead and open the public hearing for any comments?
We have none.
No comments, going once? Going twice? This room is totally empty except for Randy and I, so we will now close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Potem Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Aye.
All right, then, moving on to the next item, adopt resolution to approve the solid waste and recycling rates for commercial customers for fiscal year 2020-21. So can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Potem Edwards and council members. I'll have a PowerPoint, brief PowerPoint presentation for you, so I'm going to share my screen. Okay, so yes, the, uh, hearing this evening is regarding the solid waste and recycling rates for commercial customers for fiscal year 2020 through 2021. And the commercial rates are handled differently than the residential rates. Uh, the residential rates were part of your TCSD service level rates that were approved by you just, uh, earlier here this evening. The commercial rates are charged directly by CRNR to the customers, however, they're still included in our franchise agreement and therefore require city council approval of these rates. So the rate that CRNR is proposing for this coming fiscal year includes both the CPI adjustment as well as the landfill tipping fee adjustment, which are included in the franchise agreement, and similar adjustments as your increase in the residential rates. CRNR is also requesting an extraordinary cost increase with this year's rate, uh, which is an allowance in our franchise agreement, and that extraordinary cost increase is 9.98% of their current rate, uh, which I'll cover for you here in just a minute. The amount of that rate increase actually varies based on the size of the service, the bin size, and the frequency of collection, and the rates, both the current rate and the proposed rates, uh, were included with your staff report, uh, in the packet you had with you this evening. So the total rate adjustment that's being proposed is 12% of the current rate. So the increase in the rate, again, as I mentioned, includes both the CPI and the landfill tipping fee adjustment, which are addressed and allowed in the franchise agreement, uh, as well as this extraordinary cost increase, which, again, I'll cover here in just a minute. The extraordinary cost increase is based primarily on two factors. Uh, one is the requirements of the state mandated commercial recycling programs, uh, that's some legislation that was passed over the last couple of years known as AB 341, which is requiring mandatory commercial recycling service, as well as AB 1826, which is requiring mandatory commercial organics recycling. So those two, uh, mandatory recycling programs are one of the, uh, issues that is driving this extraordinary cost increase. The second factor that's driving this extraordinary cost increase is what's, uh, been known as the China Sword, um, issue, which basically is the loss in the market for the sale of the recycling materials. So without, uh, that market being there, it reduces the revenue that CRNR can generate on the sale of the recycling materials, which again is leading towards this extraordinary cost increase that's being proposed, this 9.98% increase. In addition to this, uh, rate increase, CRNR is also proposing to add a setup fee for new commercial customers, new commercial accounts, which is a one-time fee of $50 in order to set that account up. So summarizing, the rate increase is proposed as a total of approximately 12% of the current rates, and again, that includes both the allowed franchise agreement increase as well as the extraordinary increase that's proposed by CRNR. And that concludes staff report, and we have to answer any questions, and again, as you mentioned, representatives from CRNR are on the call as well here and can answer any questions if you have some from them.
All right, does anyone have any questions? No, and I see Alex is there, and he is unmuted and ready to go, just in case. All right, if there are no questions, then I will go ahead and open up the public hearing for any comments.
There are none.
There are, there are no comments for a public hearing, so going once, going twice, and I will close the public hearing and, um, accept motion.
So moved.
Okay.
Peter, do we need to read this again?
Uh, no, you do not, it's just a resolution.
All right, so can we have roll call then, please for the vote?
Yes, um, Mayor Potem Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes unanimously, and we will move on to any departmental reports. Community Development Department Monthly Report, that's exciting stuff right there.
And all of these, Madam Mayor Potem, are just for informational receiving file only.
All right, so then we can go ahead and move on to commission reports, and I know that we may have some of those, so who would like to present commission reports? Brad, you want to go first?
Sure, I'd be happy to, thank you, uh, and, and good evening, uh, council members. At our June meeting, um, we were pleased to have the new captain of the Highway Patrol Temecula Office, Captain Jason Penner, reach out and introduce himself, and he asked if he could become a regular participant, and commission approved it, so Captain Jason Penner with CHP will be joining our police chief and our fire chief in sharing, uh, updates. And that's my report.
Great, okay, anybody else? Who we got? No, no? No other commission report?
Mr. Chairman Levine can report.
Okay, Eric, go ahead.
Great, so notable during our pandemic is how community services continues to adapt to delivering outstanding programming and services. In honor of National Park and Recreation Month, I want to share just a few things that the community services team has been able to do for our community, even though we can't be together. We've provided limited outdoor programs and services, we've made tennis and pickleball courts open and active, we're providing swimming lessons, we're distributing meals to seniors Fridays from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. We've also bolstered our online presence and offerings. Since June, we've evolved the Temecula Valley Museum with our second Saturdays at home, we're providing free live online art lessons with Bigfoot. We've premiered six summer concert series at home with over 23,100 views, and notable regulars, Councilmember Schwenk and Commissioner Borgeson. And actually, that number is about 27,100 at last count, if you include our Fourth of July, uh, celebration. The final concert in the series is Thursday, July 30th at 7:00 p.m., featuring Crowd Theory. You can watch it on Facebook at Temecula Parks and Rec. We've also recommended five summer movie series at home, including Game and Craft Ideas with over 4,530 views. Lastly, we've prepared the community for the reopening of the CRC pool with informative informational videos with over 8,910 views. In summary, your community services department will continue to create community through people, parks, and programs. It's what we do. And that concludes my report.
So Eric, as, as a chairperson, are you, um, leading any of the craft projects?
Not as of yet.
Not the, yeah, meaning like the macaroni around the picture, the, the picture that you draw, nothing, nothing yet?
Nothing yet.
If and when you do, we would love to, um, have you bring that to a council meeting and share with everyone.
I might just do that.
All right, so are we going with planning? Anybody? No?
That concludes commission reports for tonight.
All right. So now we have, I know we have the, uh, public safety report.
Good evening, Zach Hall here, virtually. I'm ready to provide the report when you're ready.
I'll go right ahead.
All right, we, uh, this report will be similar to the others, where we compare the month before, uh, as things start to open up and we start to see more people out and we start to reengage with the community, you'll see the stats, uh, start to change a little bit. Uh, we had, we responded to 5,569 calls for service in June, out of our traffic bureau, 602 citations. Previous month was 855, we saw 23 DUI arrests, previous was 17, 41 traffic accidents on par for the month before. The mall, 71 calls for service, uh, we had, uh, zero felony arrests, and, uh, we matched our misdemeanor arrests at one and one for the month before. Our special teams, uh, 19 onsite felony arrests, seven, uh, felony warrants served, 29 misdemeanor arrests, three misdemeanor warrants served, and our volunteers who have been starting to slowly reengage are up to 281 hours of service this month, the prior month, uh, was at zero as we had them stay home. Uh, investigative bureau statistics have picked up, we assigned 30 cases to the bureau, prior month, 25 were assigned, uh, they closed 48 cases this month, and the previous month was 22. Uh, that concludes my formal report.
All right, thank you, Zach, so, um, anything, city attorney?
City manager? Madam Mayor Potem?
And city manager?
Yes, uh, good evening, members of the city council, um, just one item, and, uh, you know, listening to some of the comments earlier in the meeting, I think it's important for me to mention that the, the Old Town retail dining experience and idea, um, came from a good place. The staff, the council, um, we were truly trying to help, uh, the business community, not just the restaurants, but the retailers down here, and so, um, again, it came from a good place, nobody was, we recognized the hardship, and we were trying to do something that we could, uh, we could do within our powers to try to help people survive, uh, over the next few months, maybe longer. So in that vein, um, we've been kicking around another idea, um, related to Sam Hicks Park as a pilot project to sort of expand, uh, some of Temecula's fitness businesses, and, uh, under the watchful eye of Kevin Hawkins and TCSD, where we would consider accepting an application for where we would consider accepting an application, for example, for yoga business that can no longer operate within the confines of four walls, but maybe that's a, a exercise and something that the community would enjoy in one of our parks, in this case, over at Sam Hicks. And so, we are excited about this. We're willing to give it a shot. We just wanted the city council to be made aware of this kind of pilot project, and we're going to come back and visit it in four weeks. Certainly, we got other ideas, but again, the intention here is from a good place of trying to do what we can within the confines of restrictions that the state has imposed, the counties impose, COVID environment, and trying to help small businesses stay afloat. So, more to report back on. We're excited about this, and, and I'll be able to have a, a report probably in two weeks and let you know how this is going. So, with that, Madam Mayor Protem, that concludes my report this evening.
I think that's a great idea, Aaron, and I know that we've received emails from a couple of individuals or businesses, and so I know that they're probably really glad, too. So, city council members, anything to close with? Nothing? So, I, you know, I would like to say that this has been such a trying several months for everyone, and just imagine having to change, and specifically looking at Community Services, the literally dozens and dozens and dozens of programs that we operate for residents for fun, for summer, for kids, for all-age groups. And Community Services has, you know, the little duck paddling its feet under the water. The top looks very calm, but the feet are going like crazy. And their feet are still going like crazy, as evidenced by, you know, what they talked about today. So, and city staff, the same thing. It's not easy to set up these types of meetings. And residents, thank you for everybody that's hanging in there and still tuning into city council meetings. We appreciate it, and we appreciate all your feedback and your public comments that come in, you know, in written form. Randy does a great job of reading those, so it's been a learning experience for all of us. And for the most part, I think that we're doing really well and hope that, you know, everything is over with soon. Hope this virus really subsides. So, I will accept an adjournment to the next city council meeting for August 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned. Thank you.